It is Tuesday, February 25th. The Board Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California is now meeting in regular session. All items that are on the agenda will be taken in the sequence unless we need to take them out of order to meet public or staff availability. While I was scheduled to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, since it looks like I feel safer than I ever have here in this job, I'm going to ask the Sheriff to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Introduction of any new employees? Jay?
No, but I have two other former employees.
How's it work?
I think the Board's aware. Jim did not give me his three-year notice, but he did give me three months. Jim Carnegie is retiring from county service effective on Friday. He's worked now for 12 years and four months, how many days and how many hours? And he has been the primary staff person dealing with grants and primarily community development, block grants. And one of the largest projects that he was involved in was the harbor renovation, the $5 million that initially kicked off that project. He's also been the point person for numerous park-related projects, grant projects, housing rehab. He's our fiscal manager. He's our resident dessert maker and also storyteller. So on this one here, I'd like to present him with a plaque for his years of service with Del Norte County. This, I believe, is his second retirement. And he was over 30 years with the Department of Forestry in Oregon before he came to us. He's also our fiscal manager, fiscal chief for the Office of Emergency Services, so we're going to have to replace him there, too. So the plaque reads, "February 28, 2014, presented to James Carnegie in appreciation for your service and dedication to Del Norte County Office of Administration for the past 12-plus years." And I'd like to present this to Jim and tell him how much we appreciated his time and his efforts. And I think there will be a little get-together in the afternoon of Friday to shake his hand and talk with him before he walks out on us.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Jay and the Board for their support in these 12 years. It's been an adventure. Thank you.
Jim, no stories after all that time?
No, no stories.
Okay. Well, Jim, on behalf of the Board, and I'm sure other members might have something to say, but I want to thank you very, very much for the work and the effort that you put in, a lot of it behind the scenes, but a lot of it out front in cooperation with the different members of the community when it came to block grants and working together to maximize the monies, the little monies that were available to maintain the level of service and that we have in this community. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, I would reiterate, Chair Finnegan, what you're saying is, Jim, you've done a great job. We are going to miss having you up there. And always very professional on the CDBG. It's one of those departments you don't get complaints about. You know it operates pretty smoothly. So thank you for your hard work and wish you well on your second retirement.
Yeah, I just have to agree with both the other supervisors that have spoken. Kind of the unsung hero, hard-working, get things done. I like that, and we appreciate it a lot.
I, too, want to thank you because you have, you've made sure that the children in this community and the seniors in this community and the service organizations have been able to do as much as possible with the limited dollars that we have. And had we not had someone there, it could have just been one big fight every year instead of a way that we made sure that CASA was funded and the library and the senior center, and the list just goes on and on, not to mention knowing that you and Janine have been in some fairly horrific situations in trying to look at housing that was kind of scary to go into, but you were able to figure out how we could make people's lives better. So thank you very much.
And I just want to chime in, Jim. I didn't get a chance to work with you too closely this past year, but I wish you well and continued good luck, good health, and thank you for your service.
Again, noon Friday, cake? You making it, Jim?
Oh, yesterday was really good.
Okay. So I'd encourage everybody that's available to please join us then on Friday. So right now, it's any report of any actions taken at a closed session?
No reportable action today.
Okay. Well, at this time, the Chair would request any deletions, corrections, or additions to the agenda in order for us to take action. It will have to arise subsequent to posting the agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Any such items? No? Okay. Then let's receive brief reports or announcements relative to County of Del Norte programs, projects, stuff we've been up to. Supervisor Sullivan, you want to start?
Yeah, mine will be a little briefer than the rest of you. I was, the week following our last meeting, I had a meeting in Gasky regarding removal of trees for the airport out there, about 45 residents, and a lot of questions that they had and some very legitimate questions. And we will be at a future meeting. I'm going to ask that we put it on a board agenda to request that the Caltrans Department of Aviation, individual that's been making some of the decisions there, come and answer questions to folks that live out there. I think those are some legitimate questions and should be answered. So that was, that was right after our meeting the previous week and then, or the following day. Then I also attended a local transportation commission meeting and continue to get new information on some other fiscal stuff that our director is working on right now, and more to come on that. I had, attended the emergency Board of Supervisors meeting regarding Lake Earl. It is ironic that we knew, we were talking about drought one moment, and I knew that Del Norte County, it rained so frequent and such buckets of water, we'd be having a special meeting to take care of it. But it is, it does point out that the fact that we have this agreement and there is this hard, fast deadline of February 15th to drain the lake is absolutely ridiculous. That is, I'm glad that we're going to be working at some future permitting with that that would extend the deadline to do that and maybe even talk about the level as to what we do that. I mean, right now, it has not been a perfect system, and it does need to be tweaked going forward. So, anyway, I received several constituent calls last week. I was out of country for last week, so for folks that tried to get a hold of me last week, I will be calling you this week. And regarding some are State of Jefferson, another we're dealing with dogs. So, anyway, that's it.
Okay. Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. I, too, was out of the county for the week following our last meeting. I was at a Coastal Commission meeting in Pismo, and the Governor has just completed the last vacancy on the Commission. And I think that, I believe that the Commission is moving further center. And with this new appointment of Eric Howell out of Pismo Beach, I think that we will see a direction happening that will be more palatable to, to the citizens. The Senior Center, we're working on our personnel policies and rewriting those. Our CTA met and we accepted the transportation plan and took a look at different kinds of changes that are probably going to be coming around, but the plan will now go to El Tico. And the school district is moving forward on lots of different plans, and the McCarthy Center is actually going to move over to educational options next year, and so we've been working on that because I think it will, we'll see an expanded area of service. And the vocational training programs are stepping up and taking a brand-new direction, which I think is pretty exciting, and it's pretty exciting to be involved with. And I think that's about it. Thanks.
Supervisor Hammingson.
Yes, thank you. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, still working on getting funding for the RSA project and how we're going to, going to take care of that. And, you know, I have to, I have to comment on this once in a while because the runway safety area project is not an extension. It's not making the airport bigger. It's not changing anything but basically drainage and doing a few other little things, but nothing that makes our airport anything but what it is right now. We're not adding to it so that we can bring bigger planes in. We're just trying to keep the service that we have now. So I just have to say that once in a while because every once in a while, I see something in the paper that says this is a runway safety area extension or expansion. So this is not an expansion. This is just to keep what we've got. Also had a Pelican Bay State Prison Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. Clark DuKart was appointed, just to receive the appointment. He is now our new warden. He was acting warden for a little while, and while he was in that process of getting approved, they had a warden, an acting warden, come in for a short period of time. They're still recruiting for correctional officers. There's 126 vacancies. It takes nine to 12 months right now to go through the process. They're trying to get that, they're trying to get that down to about eight months, and they're changing the academy from 16 weeks, I think, down to 12, and that starts in April. So if you apply now, you'll only go through 12 weeks instead of 16 weeks of, of the academy. Had a local transportation commission meeting. As Supervisor Sullivan said, we had an emergency meeting to breach the lake. Met with some of the ag community on some issues that are, that they're working with as far as water runoff and those types of things. So we're, we're looking at how we can approach those. Had a resource conservation district meeting, still talking about grazing leases as well as other issues. Filled in for Chair Finnegan on agenda review and met with some constituents on some Forest Service roads issues. And the new appointments are up for the RAC committee, so they were interested in those. I gave them the information that I had. I don't belong to the RAC, so I don't know a whole bunch about it, but I told them to get in contact with Supervisor McClure or Supervisor Sullivan. That was it for me.
Supervisor Hammingson, can I ask you, when somebody goes to the academy to be a correctional officer, are they paid through the academy?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And academy class just started. We, we know of a young man in our community who's gone down and started Monday, and it's a 12-week course, so congratulations to that individual. Immediately after our February 11th meeting, I chaired the solid waste management meeting where the authority voted to disband several little used ordinances and replace with a flow control ordinances. After consulting with legal staff, it was determined additional language should be included in the flow control ordinance, and that will be discussed at the upcoming solid waste meeting in March, March 12th. Upon action, the item will be forwarded to both the Board of Supervisors and the City Council. I also want to announce the R3 draft from R3 Consulting has been released and is made available to the public at this time. On Lincoln's birthday, I participated in the Chamber of Commerce Advocacy Committee where the group, we discuss issues the chamber should elect to become more directly involved within, and foremost among those issues directly was the, those that affect our community and the, in particular, Last Chance Grade and its continued effort to find an alternate route around this precarious portion of the US 101 Highway, 10 miles south of Creston City. Also met with a distance runner, Ralph Hurt, and we discussed the possibility of bringing back the very famous 10K and 5K South Beach Run, so we're lucky, we're looking at that as a possibility in the future. Thursday, February 13th, the Board met in an emergency discussion, as Supervisor Sullivan mentioned to you, about breaching Lake Earl. And isn't it funny, when you talk about something with a drought, that seems to break the drought. We might want to try that again, see if we can encourage some rain. Friday, February 14th, listened to a report from the Harbor Commission, Harbor Master Richard Young, on the upcoming recognition scheduled activities for the March, for the March events, for the 50th anniversary of the 1964 tsunami event. Last Wednesday accompanied the Del Norte Citizens Advisory Committee to Last, on Last Chance Grade, as members traveled to Gold Beach and to appear before the Curry County Board of Commissioners to solicit a letter of support from the Commissioners to urge the local transportation commission to find an alternate route around this compromised section of the, of the US 101 Highway. And the Commissioners expressed genuine concern in how it would affect their agricultural industries up there. The, that evening, I attended the monthly meeting of the Del Norte County Republican Central Committee held at its new headquarters, 245 Price Mall. Met State Senate candidate Matt Heath from Santa Rosa, Judge candidate Darren McElfresh, and District Attorney candidate Robert Drossel. Among discussions were the new bylaws that will be adopted and implemented, the upcoming June election, a wine and cheese event by the sea, March 9th. And Del Norte Republican Central Committee voted to support a Board of Resolution action to request Del Norte County join a group of other northern California counties to withdraw from the state following the United States Constitution and join the proposed State of Jefferson. The vote was unanimous. Thursday, February 20th, I attended the North Coast Air Quality Management Monthly Meeting in Eureka. Nothing to report there other than they have two locations. They've closed escrow on a location, and they're looking to see about what they want to do with the now soon-to-be vacant building that they have right now, whether they want to lease it out or whether they want to sell it. That evening, Angie and I attended the Childcare Council's Chamber of Commerce mixer at the Council's office on K Street. Saturday, I participated with 23 other volunteers from Home Depot, the Creston City Police Explorers, our Daily Bread Ministries, Take a Bite Out of Bike Program to landscape and cutback overgrowth in and around the grave sites, the odd fellows section of the cemetery. Special thanks to all the volunteers, including Ace Hardware and Barney Wannicki, Home Depot and GM Alex Campbell, Blake Alexander, Alexander Derry, Dairy for material contributions. Recognition and special thanks to event organizers Lauren Blakely and Dave Cormack. The effort cleaned up about two-thirds of the overgrowth, and another volunteer effort to finish the job will take place within the next two weeks. Yesterday, at our local area formation commission meeting, Commissioners heard the progress being made for the creation of a special fair district where the ballot measure will appear in November. Also discussed was the expiration of cemetery district for purposes of maintaining our local cemetery in its, in pristine condition. We'll have more to report on a future meeting. Also looked at a blight site on Del Norte Avenue and helping out some folks there who don't have the ability to clean up the exterior of their homes, so we'll be looking into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also had a few meetings, try to keep it brief here. Some of them mentioned already, had a meeting, the Air Force JPA, had a meeting of the First Five Children Families Commission, talked about family resource centers. Had a call, CSAC officer call regarding SEQA that is challenging the courts. Courts are going to rule on whether doing a reverse SEQA is also going to be required. Had a tri-agency meeting, had a CSAC Board meeting, had a legislative reception where we met with some of the key legislators, then had a meeting where Martin Hachina, who's the Undersecretary of the Department of Corrections, addressed us regarding the prison overcrowding and the two-year delay that the courts have granted in lieu of releasing prisoners, putting them on the street, or sending more back to our county jails. So that was good news. Had a meeting with the former CAO of CSAC, Steve Zaley, who also was tasked by the Governor after he retired for disbanding the RDAs, the redevelopment agencies. We talked about the future, a year from now after the elections, of how counties are going to be more involved with economic development. And he also gave me some insight as to financing different issues in the state. Met with community development and the CAO on several issues, also had a meeting with some local transportation staff regarding cost of transportation and how the money flows, and that was pretty much it. So with that, it's a little bit early for public comments, so let's go ahead and take the consent agenda. And I get a motion on the consent agenda, please.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on any item that is on the consent agenda? Okay, bring it back to the Board for the discussion? No? Hold a vote, please.
Supervisor Caitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hammingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. This time, I'd like to receive a brief report from County Administrative Officer. Jay?
Over the last couple of weeks, we've been involved in some employee negotiations and contract negotiations and some issues with existing contracts. Have been preparing for the workshop with the State of Jefferson issue. Had some CDBG meetings. We have initiated our mid-year budget meetings. We're a little bit late because of some of the other priorities we've had, but I think we'll be done with those meetings either by the end of this week or early next week and have a report on the March 11th meeting. We've been dealing with some issues that have come forward through the public and have also attended a little bit of training that's done internally for all of our supervisors and managers.
Good. Budget transfer, item number 12. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the budget transfer number 0205 and the amount of $10,000 within the inmate welfare budget, as requested by the Sheriff. Any public comment on that? Back to the Board, anything? Hold a vote, please.
Supervisor McClure? Yes. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hammingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Item number 15, jumping around, is direct the county code enforcement staff to coordinate work with the city code enforcement staff, as requested by Supervisor Sullivan.
I asked this to be put on from the solid waste management meeting we had, and basically I've asked, we've asked individually code enforcement to look at it, and he needs direction from the Board to be able to meet with the city to look through the current solid waste ordinances to see what are good parts and what part are unnecessary. My personal belief is I don't think that organization should be passing laws. That's been a stance I've had for several years. So at this point, I would ask for a direction from the Board to, to direct code enforcement officer Mason to meet with Eric Taylor, the code enforcement person from the city, to see, you know, are there parts that can be adopted? The whole idea is to get to a uniform set of laws, city and county, where you don't have one set of, one set of laws within the city limits and one set of laws, set of laws within the county. So that would be the reason for, for putting this on the agenda.
Okay. Well, I know that we had talked about that all those ordinances that were adopted need to come back to this Board and to the City Council individually. This is a coordination to see which ones should come back, then, as a recommendation?
This reviews the existing laws that had already been passed prior.
Okay.
Yeah. And so in any future laws that go through, obviously, they have to be ratified by the city and the county to do that. So it would, the whole idea is to streamline stuff and make it more efficient and also more effective for the citizens that live city or county. There's not a discrepancy as why I have one set of rules here, but I've got another set of rules there.
Good. Board comment? How about public comment?
As the county member of the solid waste task force, I do have a comment. Right now, there's an element of the existing solid waste ordinances that I have believe affect both the county and the city. And that section is a responsibility ordinance. Clarkmore, when he was chair and the people that served on that task force at that time, saw a definite need for the responsibility ordinance to be added to the solid waste authority. At that time, all you had to do to see why that ordinance was needed was drive around and look at car parts, car parts in apartment complexes and in duplexes. Most of the time, guess what was there? Piles of trash that people said, oh, I'm going to be responsible for because I am a self-hauler. And guess what? The garbage just sat there. The responsibility ordinance put a stop to that. Over two years ago, the task force met with tenants and landlords at the wellness center. In my opinion, at the discussion of, at that time, the task force itself did not take the recommendations that were made at that meeting. Back to the group to make policy statements when we voted on doing away with the responsibility And I think the reason for that was personalities. Unfortunately, if you do away with the responsibility ordinance, guess what you're going to have? Garbage in carports. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the comment want to speak to this item, which is to direct staff to coordinate with city staff regarding ordinances for solid waste?
Wow. Your introduction is longer than my statement.
Good.
I particularly don't like the responsibility portion, car parts, all the trash. In 2006, 2005, when Dave Mason was hired, he took care of getting everybody up to the appropriate level so that we were at the ideal level for trash. You can get trash serviced to a tenant, and they may or may not use it. There is an entire procedure set forth in the state code that says that if a landlord is, or if a tenant is remiss, the landlord can be given a citation, a notice to do something. If he doesn't do it, then there's a whole procedure where he can be taken to, where the tenant can be taken to court, and all the bill for doing that, the attorney's fees, the costs, are all given to the landlord. So there's a whole procedure there. You don't have to make the landlord a criminal, and you certainly shouldn't make me guilty of a misdemeanor because one of my tenants throws trash out in the street, and I can't make them use it even if they do have it. But there is a procedure in the state code, so I don't think it's necessary. Just a thought.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
Mary Wilson, county resident. I've been involved in the task force two years ago at the public meeting, and as well as we had a subcommittee, and then we put it back before the entire task force in regards to these ordinances. And at that point, over 18 months ago, it was recommended by the task force that the good portions of these ordinances be adopted within the city and county ordinances, and then that would thereby take the authority out of the enforcement business. So to pull the good things and to put those within city and county, to kind of streamline it, to make it more clear and easy for the citizenry to, to be able to follow it. And so that was our recommendation, gosh, 18 months ago, and nothing has really happened regards to that. So we, again, have brought the issue back to the table, the task force did, and then also the authority brought it up, that we would hope that this Board would recommend that county and city staff would get together, see what the good parts are, and then those parts would hopefully be, you know, brought in, and then it would be a uniform set of rules for the entire county. So that was the intent of, I believe, the motion that's on the table today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment on this? Okay, bringing it back to the Board. Does any supervisor disagree that we should give direction to a code enforcement officer to work with the city code enforcement officer and bring those ordinances that they agree on back to the respective Boards, at which time we'll engage this conversation again?
I, I agree that we can do that, but I, I want to ask that I, I believe that the responsibility ordinance portion of the, of the ordinances is extremely important because it allowed, for the first time in the history of Del Norte County, for recycling to happen at apartment complexes. And it also, I can remember a house just right around the corner that the garage would be open, and it was literally stacked to the roof in the garage with trash. And I can remember going into the Brisa track and seeing carports that were stacked to the ceiling in the, in the carports with trash, which we have to figure out a way of how to make it responsible. I can also remember the blighted areas where people would, self-haulers would dump, and we would find the information. We could actually, the code enforcement officers- We could actually, the code enforcement officer could, could go through, it was almost like an old Alice's restaurant, where they could go through and figure out where the trash came from. But when they went to the property, the person had either, had moved. And then the landowner said, "Well, it's not mine because, just because it came from my property." And many times, we found out that not only had the person moved, but the landlord had hired someone to take care of the trash that was left behind by the former tenant, and that's when we found it on Union Street. That's when we found it up on, up in the, in the hills. And so, the importance of being able to figure out who's responsible, I would hope that that remains alive and well in the, the blight ordinances. I have no problem with bringing the, the ordinances together and making sure that the city and county staff are working together on the same, going down the same path, but I would also suggest that the, the leadership of the city and the county probably through two by two, talk about the significance of these ordinances, because we really did take a giant step in blight when we started having people be responsible for their own trash.
Okay, since I do not hear any disagreement, and since I understand that there is consensus, and since we will, everybody will get another bite out of this apple when it's brought back to this board, I'm going to close the discussion and ask the, and direct the CAO to work with CDD and code enforcement to do what we've asked here, which is to coordinate with the city and bring back some recommended ordinances. Okay? With that, we had a 10:25 of public comment and a 10:30 of the sheriff. Sheriff, you probably want to get back on the street, huh? So, let's take, so let's take you first. 10:30 Delmar County presentation of personalized badges for deputies and officers as presented by the sheriff.
We did this the last time in the public forum here, because I think it's, it's something that we've done, done for quite a while within the department of recognizing those that have hit the milestone of 10 years of service to the county. And in that process, we, we present them with a, a personalized badge, one that bears their name and their, and their position within the agency, and is a way that they can show that, that they have not only earned this thing, this right, but it's also a token of our appreciation for the merit that they've, that they have accomplished and the, and the goal that they have attained in, in becoming a 10-year member with our department. These gentlemen behind us are all the, that we have honoring at this point with 10 years, and these are the gentlemen that, that are, again, are the future of our, our agency. They are the best, and we appreciate their service and their loyalty to our agency. In that, we have Sergeant Potter, and he is with our corrections staff.
Thank you, sir.
If you don't mind, we're going to hold our applause for all again and recognize.
Now luckily, we just got to retain Deputy Barber. He was almost ready to go to Wizin', but he's, he's now staying with us, and so we're very appreciative of his hard work and efforts and the fact that we get to keep him. And this one actually says Deputy Sheriff, but we're going to have to knock that one off because Daniel Snack has just been promoted to our, one of our new sergeants also, so, in that appreciation and for 10 years of service.
Officers, if anybody, any of you would like to address the board, I'm going to invite you to. Public speaking doesn't go with the job.
They didn't even slow down.
Yeah. Well, on behalf of the board of supervisors and the individual supervisors may have something to say, I just want to not only congratulate you, but thank you very, very much. 10 years of public service at little pay and a lot of heat is to be commended, and I thank every single one of you that got an award to do it today, as well as the rest of your comrades. So, thank you very, very much. And with that, we're going to go ahead to the 10:25 item, which is public comment. So, members of the public may address the board on any item that is either on or off the agenda, but it should be within the jurisdiction of the board. And if you're going to comment on something that's coming up later in the agenda, I'm going to ask you to hold your comments until that item comes up. Otherwise...
Get a list.
Pardon me?
Tony's going to list the speakers. Sorry.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you choose to comment now, and we bring up the item later, you may be asked to hold your comments at that time. So, public comment, please. Tony, who we got?
Well, it looks like you're up there, Richard.
Yeah.
The county has a vacancy on the solid waste task force. Karen Sanders resigned at her last meeting, and I hope the board of supervisors and clerk of the board will announce that vacancies, because many times at our meetings, we have a problem with not having a quorum. So, our business does not get done. And because this year, we have to do the five-year plan, I think it's important that the county has its fair share of representation.
So, now, is the person that resigned a member that is appointed by the county?
Yes.
And then, so you're asking us to make sure it's advertised as per the Matty Act?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Richard. Tony will take care of it. Any other public comment?
Mary Wilson, I just was following up with Richard's comment. And there are 11 positions on the task force, and it's kind, I'm, kind of my feeling that the more people you have on the task force, it's a little bit harder to get that quorum. And we have had a, a very large group. I didn't know if there's, who makes the rules about the number of people on the task force? If maybe if it were cut back a little bit, it would, would be easier to get a quorum. And if this body does that, I would consider maybe lowering the number a bit, because it, it is kind of a, a large group, and that would, I think, would be easier to make that quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to our solid waste people. Is this an appointment by the board through solid waste? Where does it come from?
The appointment's by the board.
So, it's our representative?
I'm not, I don't answer on the numbers, but it's made by the, by the board. There's an application made at board, and then we appoint to solid waste, to the task force, excuse me.
Then I would ask the task force to make a recommendation to our board as to quorums and how many people are effective or efficient, and we'd be happy to hear that at the time, next meeting, as a matter of fact. We're still going to advertise, Richard, but I would like to hear that recommendation as brought up by Mrs. Wilson. All right, let's go ahead and take item number 13, which is to discuss and take possible action regarding the pledge of revenue for financial assurances for the post-closure maintenance regarding the landfill. Who's handling this? Ted?
Ted's handling. Happy to? Thank you, Chair Finnegan. So, staff recommend, because this is part of the process, this is a binding agreement, so it needs to be separately approved by the city and the county in addition to the authority. This is the pledge of revenue agreement. Essentially, the state board looking over our shoulder on these issues, CalRecycle, the California Department of Resources Recovery and Recycling, requires that there be monies available to address issues at the landfill for as long as we're responsible for the landfill. So, we have a 30-year post-closure maintenance period, and through that time, we need to have a dedicated monies available to address post-closure maintenance, water quality monitoring. And the reason why we need to revisit this issue is that since this was last approved in 2008, the regulations have increased, and we need to produce a cost estimate of the potential corrective action costs where there to be a disaster at the landfill, either that affected water quality or didn't affect water quality. Maybe there was a, a major earthquake and move, movement occurred on the materials, but there needs to be resources available to address those issues should they arise. So, we've now produced the cost estimates for those corrective actions, and the CalRecycle staff have been working with us to update this pledge of revenue. It's been reviewed by our board, and staff recommended it be adopted by the board of supervisors.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is a binding agreement that you are signing, and I have not reviewed it because it has not come to my office yet. I would have requested it be pushed off to the next meeting, please.
Okay.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay, it's been withdrawn. It would be appropriate, I did not notice that it had, did not have the county council sign off, nor did it when it hit the agenda.
Are we going to have any more discussion on this, or we're going to bring it all back?
We're going to bring it back, but if you want to...
Well, I just wanted a couple of questions to Ted, and, and there's 22 years left, Ted, is that right? Am I getting that right?
Well, the landfill was completely closed in February of 2006, and so this obligation certainly will persist through 2036, if not beyond that.
And then I just wanted to know about these amounts, this 447,500 for water-related and 522,200 for non-water-related. Is that over the course of that, rest of that time, or is this the cut time left, or is this an annual thing?
Well, it's a very good question. Hopefully, it's a never thing. It's a, it's an estimate for kind of work, nominal worst-case scenarios, so how much could it cost if, if there was really a problem? And then we produce a cost estimate, and then the pledge of revenues assures that that money would be available if necessary, but certainly, we do not hope for a disaster, and we do not anticipate a specific type of disaster.
Okay. Well, I just, well, anyway, then the $96,225, which is an annual expense, is that what you're expending now to maintain the...
That is the cost estimate for reasonable maintenance costs. However, those will fluctuate from year to year depending upon the severity of storms and erosion events.
And all this will be brought back at our next agenda as an action item?
Yeah, okay. I just thought maybe there was some stuff that we could deal with first, but when he brought it back, but it's okay, we can bring it back.
All right. All right. Well, you can talk when we bring it back. Let's get to item number 14, which is to discuss and take possible action to approve a relevant solution for an advisory election to allow the voters of Delmar County to voice their opinion regarding a separation from the State of California and forming, of formation of a new state. CAO?
Previously, the board took action to direct staff to produce the resolution, and as you just so eloquently read my recommendation, it is to discuss and take action regarding the adoption. This is obviously the time to discuss any type of wording changes, if there are any. We've met with the elections clerk to go over what the financial implications are, and, excuse me, to put this on the agenda is approximately $4,000, and we could then meet the timeline to put it on June.
Okay. And just clarification, because I was asked by the newspaper, how come we said 30,000, or Tahima said 30,000, do an analysis, and all of a sudden it only cost us 4,000? 4,000 is just the cost to put it on the ballot. It is not for doing any of the legwork on it. Supervisors, do you want to weigh in on this? I think this reflects, well, as you said, there was a motion that failed three to two to delay this till after the workshop. Then was a motion to put it on the ballot, but we couldn't agree on verbiage. We direct a staff to bring back the verbiage. This is the verbiage that is consistent with Tahima County, and so here we are. So, somebody want to take the lead on this? Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, thank you, Chair, Chair Finnegan, I'm sorry. You know, I read the Supervisor Hemmingson's motion to review it and go back, and it said to place an advisory vote on the June ballot to withdraw from the State of California in support of the formation of the State of Jefferson, which there was, of course, no action on. I seconded that. So, I would, in looking over this current resolution, which I think is excellent, I would ask that the verbiage include where it says, and I think it's in three portions here, the formation of a new state that we place in there, the formation of the State of Jefferson. I see a lot of people well organized and have put a lot of work into this, and I think in those three areas, whereas one, whereas two, and now therefore, that instead of this being a blank jump into anonymity, into an unknown state, that we actually put the words "State of Jefferson." I did have a conversation with County Council Wileyne, Arthur Wileyne, in Tahima County, and he said there was no reason, there's no legal reason not to put it in there. This, the Tahima County Board of Supervisors just elected to put it in as a, as a way of saying, "Well, the name may change." But I think in recognition to those who put the effort into it, that our resolution, which is, again, an advisory resolution only, be included, that this, instead of just saying "Formation of a new state," it actually say "Formation of the State of Jefferson."
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Was that a motion? Or is it to change the verbiage?
Well, I, I'm going to go back to Supervisor Hemmingson's original motion, which recognizes the state, and I'll, I'll read it again.
No, that's, that's fine.
In fact, I'll tell you what, I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and hold the discussion, and after the discussion, if you want to go ahead and reiterate your motions or make new ones, that's fine. So, let's have a little discussion, and then we'll have public comment, and then we'll come back for something. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I'm really disappointed in this, and primarily, I'm disappointed because I feel that we're slipping under a line where it becomes an advisory vote, and when it's an advisory vote, then there's no fiscal analysis that is tied to that, to that vote. And I have had numerous phone calls of people asking questions on, "Well, how will, how will a bond be passed? How will there be money for the roads? Why wouldn't we have a highway patrol? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to be able to make sure that people had adequate services in the community?" And, and the list just, there's a litany of lists, that all of them have a giant price tag on the back end. And this is not going to require that anybody step up to the plate and do an analysis of what this could cost our community. I estimate, and I'm just making an estimation here, that for every tax dollar that Delmar County delivers to the state, we get back about $2.50 in services. And how are we going to fill, fill that gap? But we're going to have a vote, but the vote isn't going to do the hard work, because the, the devil is in the details, and this vote is not requiring that we get in the weeds and figure it out. It's only going to be this advisory thing, this kind of pie in the sky thing, that I think has the potential of dividing our community. And a divided community is not a community that attracts business, it's not a, a community that asks people to stay and be involved. A divided community, I mean, I remember the water wars and what it did to our community. I remember the recall vote that we had when the school district was recalled and what it did and how many years it took us to recover. So, I'm just seeing us going down this path that hasn't been analyzed. And I'm asking that we not take action, get it analyzed, and figure it out, because I haven't yet figured out what's the rush, other than if we can get people to vote on it before they do the analysis, then it's much easier to get them to vote on it. Because the devil is in the details, and we need to be in the weeds, and we're not moving into the weeds on this. We're doing this advisory thing, and so I find it something that I'm not going to support.
Supervisors, you have a comment? No comments from supervisors at this time, so...
Did you have a comment, Jerry?
I'm going to go ahead and entertain public comment on this issue. Any member of the public that wishes to speak, I think you probably, somebody's already signed up, so go ahead.
Good morning. Jamie Arboro, resident of the county. I have a letter that I have submitted to the editor, whether it is printed or not, I'm not sure of. Now that much of the historical information foundation about the move to create the State of Jefferson has been established and brought to the public's attention, it is time for action. As stated in declaration petitions requested by this... As stated in declaration petitions requested by this Delmore County Board of Supervisors and signed by a substantial number of residents in each of the five districts, the action is simple. The declaration for inclusion is a non-partisan declaration, does not address any of the issues of contentions that must be addressed once the outcome of a vote by the board is arrived at. The action is a vote to establish if the people of Delmore County are in favor of separation from the state of California and the state of Jefferson or not. The Delmore County Board of Supervisors will not be making that determination. Because of history, the Delmore, because of the history of the state of Jefferson has roots that can be traced back to before the United States Civil War, 1861 to 1865, the flaws of democracy has returned to center stage. Few in this country, this state or this county will disagree that there is disproportionate distribution of population, land, industry for the equality promised by democracy. It is the reason the nation was, chose to become a federal constitutional republic, a nation of laws. Each state is created to form a government that has the ability to modify its own constitution to reflect the will of the people living in the state. The state of California's constitution having been developed and perverted by larger populations and economic forces now does not reflect the interests of the rural communities. One of the basic tenets of democracy is to aid in the right of the people for political self-determination. It is the purpose sought by the state of Jefferson. The goal in formation of a new separate state is not dissimilar to that of the original 13 colonies who are being taxed without representation. As well pointed out by the visitor to Delmore County, Fred Kelly Grant, made many of us aware of the principle of coordination, which is a constitutional protection against under-representation. For all who have issues, the desire eagerly supported by the state of Jefferson is that everyone have a voice and everyone be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I have a letter here, I'd like to read to you, this is a declaration, this is a declaration from the Delmore Tea Party Patriots in Crescent City to the Board of Supervisors. The Delmore Tea Party Patriots fully support the state of Jefferson. It's a win-win situation going forward due to the fact that we have taxation without representation. The Tea Party fully supports moving forward as soon as possible with the state of Jefferson. It's a win-win situation because we're not being committed to anything. Getting the details figured out is something that's going to have to be done as we go along, plain and simple. And anyway, the Tea Party is, is over 700 strong and they're your constituents and they've signed the petitions and I'd like you seriously to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, next. Okay, any other member of the public wish to address this item at this time?
Yes.
Linda Seder, County. Just for the record, I was at the central committee meeting that Mr. Gitlin was talking about, I was asked to leave because I'm not registered as a Republican, even though I vote Republican, I'm not registered, but I'd just like for you all to know that there's maybe 25, voted unanimously for the state of Jefferson, and, okay, 25 people. All I hear from the state of Jefferson is a lot of jaw-flapping about not being represented, but they don't, they don't substantiate anything with money. Okay, and our county is going to pay $4,000 to put it on the ballot. I find that unreasonable. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Charlene Manalstein. I would like to see it on the ballot as the state of Jefferson because as Mr. Gitlin said, there's a lot of people that have put a lot of work into doing this. It's funny to me that when my kids go to Irica to visit their dad, they come home, they're like, "Mom, this state of Jefferson thing is everywhere, it's not just us." And I'm like, "Yeah, this, it's really exciting and I really, I don't see a downside to doing this. This is probably one of the smartest things that this board could do is put this on this ballot." Thank you.
Next, please.
Andy Larson of County. We're not being represented now and the people need the chance to vote for representation. We're not going to turn into a state in six months, we're not going to turn into a state in a year, there's a lot of things to do, but the statement needs to be made and the citizens of Delmore County need the chance to vote on what their future could be, whether it turns into Jefferson State, Six States, whatever. The point is, we're not being represented and without the people being able to vote on it, they're still not being represented. They need a chance to say, "Hey, we want to change, we want representation." The representation might change if all of Northern California said, "Hey, we want a new state." Things might happen. Thanks.
Anybody else, please?
Catherine Murray, I'm a resident of the city and the county. When people signed the petition for the state of Jefferson, they weren't given any fiscal information because we don't have any. Thursday, apparently there's a workshop which will have some fiscal analysis, I'm hoping, but I really urge this board to wait until we have some fiscal information because that's the bottom line. When we have nonprofits that represent Delmore and Humboldt County, all the fiscal representation is done down in Humboldt County, we know that. Fiscal representation is done by population. That won't change if there's a state of Jefferson. The people who are encouraging the state of Jefferson are extremely naive if they think that they're going to have representation from this county alone. It's still going to be based on population. And I'd like to remind the people who are touting the state of Jefferson, running around with those sweatshirts that they have with the double X's, that double X is, means double cross. Think about it.
Next, please, anybody else?
Good morning, I'm Norma Williams, President of the Delmore County Employees Association, SEIU 10 to 1. Like Catherine, I also, and Martha, I also urge that the board wait until after the workshop before you put, before you address this issue at all. Quite frankly, I feel like you're putting the cart before the horse, especially when you don't even know how to ride it. And quite honestly, I am very, very concerned as to what any kind of data and information the county staff has, comes up with and what its impact is going to be on the public employees that actually work for the county and provide services to the county. You also seem to forget that we are residents and your constituents and we will remember what you vote. Thank you.
Anybody else care to address the board on this issue?
Aaron Funk, excuse me, from Clemeth, California. I wanted to thank you for your patience in indulging in this matter, for its importance and Jay, for your time that you've spent on it and with me, I appreciate that. Martha, I wasn't going to, or Supervisor McClure, excuse me, I wasn't going to address this matter, but I'm going to now. These are petitions that were signed, they do have the name on there by the way, printed, and they do have the signature and they do have the address and they were asked if there are voters and they did have the information on the back of each petition and each person was given that or offered that, so they knew what they were voting for. I'm surprised you never asked how many people in your district voted for it or signed for it. I'm shocked and Supervisor Finnegan, that you never asked. The other three wanted to know what their constituents said. Let me tell you, you had 123 people sign this and Mr. Finnegan, you had 270, or excuse me, 200, 205 people. We never even went into Clemeth and got that many. That's a lot of folks saying, "We want some, some voice in this community." And the only way we're going to get it is for this advisory vote on June 3rd. You're asking not to do that? Not to give your constituents the right to vote on something? You're asking that the money be spent forward? Should we go out and spend $30,000 or $50,000 and then go for this vote? I doubt that's what you're asking for. Or you're asking this as a straw man to go nowhere. As far as the name Jefferson, it's very, very important we have it in there, the precedent is set, there are 15 counties that have it in their, their committee resolutions, there are three counties that have passed it with Jefferson, the fact that you're going to follow Tahima makes no sense at all because they had no reason not to put it in there. Supervisor Gitlin talked with the county council, so did, so did I, excuse me, and two of the supervisors, there was no reason, it was just left out. There's no precedent there and we're not Tahima County. There is precedent in the fact that every single committee throughout the northern portion of the state has it in there, that the leadership of this movement statewide thinks it's very important, so we have a handle on it. A name is a handle. If you've ever had a CB radio and you remember Handle, that was the name of a fellow or a gal on the radio, that was to give you a handle, a grip, a grasp on who you're talking to or about. That's very important for anything, it needs a name. It doesn't have to be a permanent name, but it needs to be a name. The automobile industry, when they devise a new model, they don't give it a name or ponder the name, they give it a name temporarily so that they can refer to it from engineering to design to finance and they allow the people that do the publicity to give it a name later on. But they have that name so they can talk about it and they can have intelligent communication and they can do the work that needs to be done down the line. And unless we get this process started, number one, none of this information's going to come forth that we do need. Number two, if we don't get it started with a proper name, we lose all the benefit-
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
-of Google, of all the research, all the publicity it's had and should have in the future. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board on this issue? Okay, then I'm going to bring it back to the board and I want to explain a couple of rules here, at least one to begin with. And that is, it's been mentioned by Supervisor McClure, it's been mentioned by people in the audience that, "Why don't you put it off until after the workshop on Thursday?" The fact of the matter is, is that was a motion that was defeated at our last board meeting. The only way that can come back on the agenda is for somebody who voted in the affirmative, in other words Supervisor Sullivan, Gitlin or Hemmingson, to bring it back on the agenda. Otherwise, it cannot come up as an action item to delay it until after the agenda. So Supervisor McClure is not in a position to make the motion, okay? Now, board members.
I'm going to add a couple of things in that I understand the significance of wanting representation. I get that. I get it that there are 53 congressmen currently in the California Congressional Caucus in Washington, or is it higher?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. And we will lose those 53 and we will probably be down to one. Because of the Reynolds-Simms decision in '64, when the number of congressmen were no longer based, or the number of senators in state senate and in, in, across the country, you were no longer allowed to base it on county of residence. It became a population base. The US Supreme Court heard the case and the US Supreme Court determined that it was important that it's not land-based, it's not acreage, it's people who are represented. And every state, I mean, we, I think it originated out of Mississippi because Mississippi was still apportioning their people based on a 1900 census. California chain does its census every 10 years and that's where we determine where our senate districts are, where our congressional districts are, where our assembly districts are, where our state senates are. And it's based on population. And what we will end up with is probably one congressman and two state senators. That will be the difference in representation. Because we as a, maybe we'll have more state senators, but that's again defined by the Reynolds-Simms decision. So it's just, it's those details that are missing. I understand the, the desire, but you need to know the details. You know, I'm not going to go and buy a car and not pay attention to what kind of motor it has. And I would hope that the citizens of Delmore County want to have the information before they vote. I mean, I do an incredible amount of research when I take on a subject and I'm just afraid that it's this, it's this pie in the sky thing that's happening and it's frightening to me because I'm afraid it's going to be divisive for our community. So I'm, again, that's where I'm standing.
Supervisor Sullivan?
I think the important thing on this and, and the reason I'm in favor of putting on the ballot is, is its process and I, and I think, here's the piece that I'm missing. I would much rather spend $4,000 upfront to find out if the citizens want us to even go forward with this, because I'm getting some mixed responses. It's, it's not been 100% positive or negative, but I think it's much more economical to spend $4,000 and see if the people even want us to go forward. If they, if they vote no, then we're going to save $30,000 to $50,000. Why would we, that, that part is the, the first thing I want to mention. The second thing is, the process would be, if the voter said, "Yes, we want you," we would be obligated to do a fiscal analysis. At that point, we would go forward. So just for the supporters to understand, the process on the county government side is, yeah, we could put it to a vote, but it wouldn't be, it would not behoove us to not do the fiscal analysis after the voter say, "Yes, we want you to go forward." So it's not an automatic thing, we turn around the next meeting and say, "Yeah, we're going to declare that we want to be part of the state of Jefferson." But I sure in the heck will know where a majority of the voters stand on this thing throughout the entire county. Second of all, vetting, really? Is that what happened with the Affordable Care Act? Is that what happened with Proposition 215 or the California Coastal Commission? Those economic impacts were huge and there was no fiscal analysis done on that. So if we're going to put a survey out essentially, and this is what we're talking about, I have no problem surveying the voters in a, in a, in a legal survey of saying, "This is what we want to find out for representation on that." But I'm much more, it's, it's, I am much more comfortable spending $4,000 to put it on the ballot to find out which way voters stand and then do the fiscal analysis if in fact the majority do. In fact, even on the Transportation Commission, we've asked our executive director to begin to put some fiscal numbers together and she's going to be at the meeting on the 27th. So, yeah, we have to do the fiscal analysis, that's, that's our obligation, we have a duty to do it, but let's find out what the voters want and this is the best way to do it from my perspective.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, I have to agree with Supervisor Sullivan, you know, and, and I hope that you're, I, I hope that when you do go to the polls, if, if this passes, if you do go to, that you are informed. You have until June the 3rd to get informed. We have a workshop coming up, there's probably any number of forums that you can go to to find out information, on the internet, wherever you choose to get your information. I want you to be informed. When you vote, I want you to be informed. And this is a perfect opportunity for us, as Supervisor Sullivan said, to spend very little money to find out where the people stand in this county. And so with that, if I could make the motion, first of all, I would make the motion to change the, where it says, new, the formation of a new state, to Jefferson State. In those cases, and I think Supervisor Gitlin said there was three places, so if we could change that to specifically say Jefferson State, I would make the motion that we put this resolution or the advisory election on the ballot.
And I will again, excuse me, I will again second that motion. If I could just have an opportunity to speak, just, just to clarify a couple of things. Sims versus Reynolds is a South Alabama case and it was based totally and completely on race. At that time, there was an issue. That's not the issue here in Delmore County or Northern California. To those of you who oppose even having this on the ballot, I'm asking you and rhetorically asking you, why are you not allowing people to have their opinion and vote? This is an advisory vote. This carries no weight. This is a photo snapshot of where people stand on an issue and so many of the questions which Supervisor McClure brings up, "What about this? What about that? What about Pelican State Prison? And what about all the monies we get?" This is a process that will be answered in Sacramento in a long-drawn-out process called reconciliation. That is, this is not the level to do it here at this level. So I say, let the people have their vote, get informed and having seconded Supervisor Hemmingson's motion, I am enthusiastically in support of letting Vox Populai, the Voice of the People, let them speak and let's hear what they have to say on this issue. And for those of you who oppose- And for those of you who oppose it, then I suggest that you vote no on it. That's your right to do. But don't deny someone else the right to vote on this in a timely and appropriate manner on the June 3rd primary. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I wanna clarify a couple of things. I'm not in opposition for people to vote on it, but I believe that the electorate needs to be informed, and the electorate needs to be informed as to the fiscal analysis of what needs to be done. So I'm not opposing that we have a vote. I'm just saying that you, you have to spend the money. If you're gonna, if you're gonna wade into these waters, you're gonna spend some money. Because if we get an advisory vote that says yes, will people have the right to say, "Can we have a do-over? Because I didn't realize it was going to mean that my taxes were going to increase by this, or that this cost was gonna be this." So we're, we're asking for people for an advisory vote where the information is not available. And so to me, that's, you're wading into, we're wading into some waters here, and that's where I'm opposing it. Not opposing it to be voted on. I think that's a grand idea, and I think that that could be done. You could do the analysis between now and November and get it done. But yes, it will cost money. This whole thing is gonna cost money. And that's what we need to know. How much money is it gonna cost?
I too had wanted it to wait till after the information gathering, but that was defeated, and that's, that ship has sailed. Am I in favor of the people having the opportunity to vote on it? Absolutely. The idea, the, the state of mind of Jefferson, needing more representation is good. We have, and I'm not gonna waste your time with a whole lot of facts and figures, because this is gonna come up in the, in the workshop, that there's only one representative for every 750,000 people. That's atrocious. I mean, even Texas is, is probably double that. But these are all issues that we'll talk about later. I have a couple of issues, though. Number one, Tahima County put it on the ballot, leaving the word of the state of Jefferson out, as some other counties have discussed, because at least one of the supervisors didn't want it, because several of the constituents didn't wanna be tied to the name Jefferson. Some people, and that happens in this community too, some, it's a matter of taste, don't like the flag. But I'm gonna take it a step further, and it's partially to save ourselves some embarrassment of some of the figures that I have seen, that I know that are gonna be brought up on Thursday, that are gonna show that it is financially, we are financially incapable of doing Jefferson as prescribed with the 15 counties, if those 15 counties choose to join. There is an impartial analysis by the LAO's office that gave us approximately, Northern California called the state of Jefferson, that shows how destitute that state will be. My problem, I, I want the people to be able to vote on it, okay? I think that we should leave out the state of Jefferson. Number one, because those facts and figures are gonna show that Jefferson is not feasible as presented. Number two, because some people don't like the name Jefferson, and we would be boxing ourselves in a corner when the facts and figures show up, that it is not feasible, that it doesn't allow us to negotiate to include, well, Marin, or San Francisco, or Sacramento, or some of the counties that are not aligned to those select few that we've picked out. So I would love for the people to have the opportunity to vote. I would ask the makers of the motion to remove the state of Jefferson, so it would give us the broadest perspective and the most latitude to hear the intention of the people, which is, most specifically, that we are underrepresented, rather than tying us into, it has to be these states, these counties, when quite frankly, even the proponents of the state of Jefferson don't know what those counties might end up being. So don't tie the voters' hands with the potential to have something that you voted on in an advisory vote that this board, then with the information we're given later, can't act on. Give us some flexibility. Get rid of that name in the motion. Otherwise, I can't vote for it. I would be happy to vote for it if you would remove it. Okay, if there's no consideration for that?
You know, your sentiments and mine were exactly the same on this particular issue because I thought it would, it would open up a broader base, that there might possibly be more voters that were in favor of the idea of representation, more so than the Jefferson State. But the people that brought this forward were adamant about the state of Jefferson being the name on the resolution. I don't have an issue with that. I think it diminishes their possibilities of success, but I have no issue with putting Jefferson State on it.
I'd like to just say I'm not going to withdraw my second to Supervisor Hemmingson's motion. We are here today having this discussion because of people becoming galvanized and involved and moving this process to the level where we're at, where we were even having a workshop on Thursday. Credit given where credit is deserved to the organizers of Jefferson State. You've done a good job.
Okay, but make no misunderstanding. This is the Board of Supervisors that's taking an action. It's not the State of Jefferson Committee that's taking that action. And as the people in Tahima said, you know, I have had constituents say, "I would like to be, have more representation. I'd like to have, be part of a new state, but I don't wanna be called the state of Jefferson. I'm a Californian. I wanna be the state of Northern California." That was the same deference that was afforded to the supervisors in Tahima, and I don't know why we couldn't do the same thing. So since you guys are adamant about a state of Jefferson, the die is cast. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
No.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
No.
It's unfortunate that you are tying our hands, I think. So going forward, staff, go ahead and present the ballot as it is to be placed on the ballot. County Council, you will do the impartial analysis, and there will be pros and cons. I think the state of Jefferson people, committee, you will be, you will be contacted probably as letters of support, and then there will be other people that will be invited to do, I think that works, that's not the way it works, letters of support, pros and cons, ballot arguments. Okay, so stay tuned, stay in touch with our elections officers and Jay to do that. And appreciate, do appreciate the concern, do appreciate the input. And with that, we're going to go to item number 16, which was to consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar. Got anything?
Regarding, regarding the legislative items, there have been a number of bills introduced since the start of 2014, approximately 2,000 of them. I received yesterday legislation that could be pertinent to Delmar County, and I'm reviewing that. We'll bring back any recommendations to the board to place letters or send letters based on our ledge platform. There are a number of them dealing everything from marijuana to water to state lands and revenue, so we need to do an analysis of each one of those. Those came in through our consultant, Peterson Consulting. Also, I've been in touch with our federal advocate regarding legislation, HR 3370. It's amended legislation. It has to deal with flood insurance, and our advocate has been on top of this since the beginning. There's been some recent amendments, as I mentioned, and it looks to be a positive in, in the majority of Delmar County. There will be some negatives that come out of this because of surcharges that could be instituted by the insurance companies. But because of, you know, we have so many people that are affected by flood zones, we've been advocating for something that is reasonable to basically Delmar County, but also rural areas, so as to not people, put people in such a financial burden that they can't afford flood insurance, and then deal with the implications of what happens if you don't have flood insurance. Because, you know, it is a very significant issue in Delmar County. So we've been dealing with our advocate. We may have a letter coming on the next agenda, but there have been some, some changes at the last minute that we need to analyze to make sure of how we address those. So we will be bringing those forward either on March 11th or later, depending on when those changes come up. Regarding the budget, we are now working on our mid-year budget. All of the departments have submitted their information. Started having meetings yesterday with a couple of departments that have some issues. Overall, the mid-years tend to come in. We will, we'll be able to pick out some of the departments that may be short of revenue or high on expenditures, and then start dealing with some plans internally. At this point, we don't have an action of the board to take, not significant action, but we will be meeting with a couple more departments this week, and I intend to have a report on the 11th. We've been working on some of these other issues since we've been a little bit overburdened with the analysis and some of the information coming from the state of Jefferson. I will note on that, that the financial information that's gonna come forward will be targeted towards Delmar County's budget. The LAO's report will be attached. It is not a cure-all. It is not going to solve all of the financial problems or, or questions that come forward, but it certainly will set the basis for discussion, and, you know, we will go forward with that too.
Okay. I can tell you, at our last meeting at CSAC, we talked about the state priorities, which is realignment, AB 85, the Affordable Care Act implementation, the water bond, the water bonds, the transportation initiatives, ensuring the historic share of transportation funding for counties, for the local street and road systems, the gas tax cleanup, cap and trade funds, Williamson Act, restoration, medical administration, in-home supportive services, which the county has quite a stake in, about a billion dollars for counties on that. Department of Fish and Game, PILP payments, the payment in lieu, property tax allocation issues, mandates, unfunded mandate, backlogs, and county fairs. That's CSAC's priority for all the counties. Then the federal advocacy, MAP 21 reauthorization, which is the Transportation Act, maintaining a level of funding, especially for local streets and roads and bridges, rural carve-outs, the state SCAP, State Criminal Alien Assistant Program, the Native American Affairs, fee-to-trust reform, Secure Rural Schools, Clean Water Act, remote sales tax litigation, payment in lieu of taxes, PILP, clean energy programs, child welfare financing, Army Corps of Engineers, veggie, I call it veggie levitation, it's levy vegetation, a removal policy, health reform, pension tier changes, temporary assistance for needy families, the reauthorization of that, and tax exempt status of municipal bonds, National Flood Insurance Program, Farm Bill reauthorization, workforce investment authorization, community development block grants, eliminate the inmate exemption, federal health benefits, digital goods and services tax fairness acts, grant funding, federal geothermal royalties, state water crises, transient occupancy, the TOT, transient occupancy taxes, Waters of the U.S., 2-on-1 statewide, and medical and long-term care premiums. Just that, just a few of the issues that CSAC is gonna be doing with our state and federal representatives, as well as, I'm also on the Western Interstate, so that's a block of rural communities that we'll be working together. And actually, I will be back in Washington DC next week lobbying on several of those issues, focusing on some of the child welfare issues, some of the reimbursement rates, definitely the transportation dollars, and, as well as the PILP payments, not to mention secure rural schools and some of the others. So we are working very hard on your behalf. Stay tuned. Anybody else have anything else? If not, I am going to, I don't know whether the proper etiquette is to adjourn this meeting or continue it, so I think, just so we hit timelines and whatnot, let's continue it. Oh, adjourn? Because we've already posted the other one. To the workshop.
To the workshop, it'd be, I think you would adjourn because you already have a separate...
Right. So let's adjourn this meeting, knowing that action is taken at this meeting. We will reconvene in a special session, which will be a workshop, to discuss the feasibility and the financial implications of creating a state of Jefferson. Any of you that are planning to attend, and be quite clear, this is gonna be a workshop to inform the board, okay? It is going to be for the board to receive information, it is not to debate the issue whether it's, it's good or bad, but to get that information that has been so lacking that is starting to filter out. I would, we're gonna hear from the schools, we're gonna hear from transportation, we're gonna hear from everybody that is from social services, we're gonna hear from our different departments, we're gonna hear where the money comes from and how lacking it is, and we're also, gosh, we're, anybody that has the opportunity that's planning to attend, be able to go online and look at the Legislative Analyst Office. Go and review the initiative that has to do with six states, and it carves out the state of Jefferson. It actually carves it out larger than the proponents of the state of Jefferson. I know it takes in Chico, it takes in Humboldt County, it takes in a couple of colleges. So take a look at that, and come prepared with your eyes open to hear what the board is gonna have to say. And while it won't be a debate, if you do have questions, contact your supervisor so they can ask those questions. And if there are questions that are missing that we need to hear, I will allow for that, but it is not gonna be a, "Well, I'm for that and I'm against that." It's gonna be an informational workshop. There will be no actions taken at that meeting. Questions? Yes, sir. Why don't you go ahead and invite you to the microphone?
Glenn Turner, and I'm a resident of Delmar County. I'd like to know when the meeting's gonna be.
I'm sorry, Glenn. It is at 3 o'clock here on Thursday, this Thursday, 3 o'clock, Board Chambers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. A minor detail. Come to the meeting, you don't know when it is. Anybody else have any questions? All right, our meeting is, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation.
Yes.
Yeah, we did at the very beginning.